This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, if everyone would please mute themselves until they're ready to speak, that would ensure good audio quality. Can we all locate our mute? Okay. And so it's now 7:03. Time to start the meeting. I'm calling the meeting to order. I'm Joanne Brown, the Chair of the Trustees. Ginny, could you read the Attorney General's opening statement? Open meeting statement? Oh, you're not muted. Oh, you're muted.
Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the Brooksbury Library Board of Trustees is being conducted via remote participation. Members of the public who would like to join the meeting may do so by using the link or the phone number provided in the agenda. This meeting is being recorded and will be shown on Channel 18. It will also be available on demand on Channel 18's website and on YouTube.
Okay, thank you Ginny. I'm Joanne Brown, Chair of the Trustees, and I'll be running tonight's meeting. We'll start with a roll call of the other trustees who are present. Linda Sabula. Unmute.
Present.
Okay. Bill has come and left, but we'll be back. Joan McCarty.
Present. Present.
Kathleen Remillard.
Present.
Bernadette Waisack. You can't, she can't make herself be heard, but she's shaking her head that she is here. Okay, Jeannie Wheeler.
Present.
Okay. Also attending is Library Director Ginny Hewitt and Assistant Library Director Emily Mylan. Is Stephen Ford, our liaison from the Board of Selectment, present? I'm assuming he's not here. We have the minutes of the October 7 meeting. They were included in your packet. Does anyone want to make any corrections?
Yeah, Joanne?
Yes.
I'm not shown as present at the meeting, and I was.
Oh, okay. I didn't look at that. I looked at everything else. Okay, then we'll... Is that the only correction? Okay. Somebody just disappeared. Oh, Emily did. Okay. Then with that correction, can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting for October 7.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Then I'll take a roll call vote because we're virtual. Linda Sabula.
Accept.
Joan McCarty.
Accept.
Kathleen Remillard.
Accept.
Bernadette, seconded. Jeannie Wheeler.
Accept.
And I accept those minutes, too.
Excuse me just a second, Joanne.
Yes.
Did I make the motion?
You did.
I don't think I said to add Bernadette's name to the number of, you know, accept it with Bernadette's name added to it.
With that correction.
Okay. So everybody, do we have to go through this again? I mean, that, we already talked about it. I just didn't say it.
Do we need to go through this again?
Yeah, I don't...
Okay, I'm just going to do it. Linda, do you accept the, approve the minutes as corrected?
Accept the minutes as of corrected.
Okay, Joan made the correction. Kathleen Remillard.
Accept as corrected.
Okay, Bernadette?
Accept as corrected.
Jeannie Wheeler?
Accept as corrected.
And I also accept as corrected. Okay, do we have anyone who's joined us online or called in that would like to make a comment? Okay, I don't hear anyone. So I'm going to go on with the, with the meeting. Reports. I have no report this evening. We received the, the packet and does anyone have any questions or comments about Ginny's written report?
No.
Okay, Ginny, is there anything that you'd like to add? You're not unmuted.
Thank you. A lot of what I have to say is covered under other parts of the agenda, but I just wanted to mention a couple of things. So on the Rogers Group, the work on that, on our statues, has been delayed by the pandemic. I've been in touch with the Conservator, and they were really impacted by the Governor's COVID-19 shutdown and then the workplace occupancy restrictions. So the studio is not able to fully open. They did do initial cleaning of the statues prior to the shutdown, but the conservation work had not yet begun. So I haven't yet, but I will be sending him a formal written extension of the time period to complete the work. You know, I wanted to see it done this year, but not knowing how there may be further rollbacks that could impact them, I would rather give them a longer extension and, and then not have to keep renewing it, if you will. He's going to keep me in touch, in touch on the status of the work. But in the meantime, the collection is safe. They're in a temperature and humidity controlled environment and secure environment as well, and also insured, just so you know that. And the other thing I wanted to mention, the report from Rockland Trust in your packet is one you got last time. It's the latest we received because the month of October just ended. So with the trustees meeting, the first week of the month, there will be a lag. But we just thought, well, it's a good practice to just stop putting it in, even though I believe you got that last month. And the other thing is it will, so I guess that's a question I, I wanted to know. Do you want this in your packet? Or would you rather we just email it to you when we receive it? So I'd kind of like to hear some feedback on that, if anyone cares.
I think I'd be happy with an email. I'm not, I'm not real sure that I follow it well enough to have it worth somebody, you know, I'm not, Linda. She can figure these things out, and I'm like, oh.
Well, the option is if we email it when we get it, even if it's three weeks into the month, it gives if Linda did have questions, you know, we could raise that with Rockland Trust.
Right.
If anyone had questions, not just Linda.
Right. I think that's reasonable.
Linda's the one that understands all that stuff and gets really involved in what goes where and how did that do it? And I sit going, hmm, I wonder.
Well, I look, I look at it pretty simplistically. Did we make more money than they charged us? And that's kind of like one pretty basic.
And will that be included?
Huh?
Will that charge be included in it?
Yeah, if you look at, on the schedule, you can see fees and you can see income. So yes, as long as they're charging us less than they're earning for us, that's okay. Or at least it's in the right direction.
Yes. So, well, then we can raise a question. Oh, so we have Bill back.
Well, no. I do, I do. I've got another computer going. So I'm on Robin's computer to be part of this meeting, and I'm just kind of monitoring the conservation meeting in the background.
Okay.
Okay.
There were...
So the other thing... Sorry, I just want to say, did Linda, did you want to say something else about Rockland Trust? Okay, I see your, mic is on.
I'm, I'm fine with a, I'm fine with an email. That's fine.
Okay, so the other thing that we did this month, usually you get a monthly budget report, you know, for this fiscal year. And so I had Megan do up a separate spreadsheet. It's got state aid funds balances on that, just so you know. For the, for those of you new to the board might not know, and I'm not exactly sure, it was several years ago, the trustees voted to reserve that money for this reconfiguration project, so something major like that. We've been saving that money since we were allowed to carry it over from year to year for maybe the past 10 years. So I, so with the balance that's in there now, that's been a long time accumulating. We get about $8,000 a year. The town gets about 16, 15,000 or 16,000, and 25% of that award goes to Chase Library, 25% to Howard Court, and we keep 25. So I just wanted to explain what that was. And, and so also on there are our article balances and gift fund balances, because you weren't getting that before. And so my question on this is, is this something you want monthly also? Or maybe just quarterly, because it doesn't change a lot?
I don't have any, but Linda?
Quarterly is fine, unless something dramatic changes, at which point I would assume that Ginny would say, "We just spent all the money in the such-and-such article." But otherwise, quarterly should be fine. That'd be my opinion.
Thank you. I do report on that, like when there's projects, you know, so that would be in a regular report. It's just you haven't gotten a spreadsheet like this. And you'll notice there's some older articles on there that have to do with carpet and flooring. And those are, DPW has to take action on that. They're aware of it. You know, there's a concern that we were asked about old articles back in August, you know, as they were trying, getting ready for town meeting, and if they were still needed. So I reminded the facilities manager of that then, and he needs to order an inventory for a carpet square so that we have it on hand when we need it, you know. Should last us 20 or 30 years if we have enough inventory. And we have the money for that left, so just wanted to explain that. And finally, there's one other financial thing, and this was not in my report because it just came up yesterday. The town is implementing some new software that allows for transmission, you know, electronic document signing. And so Megan, our admin assistant, has always been on a little working group investigating this, particularly because of the issue of, we have the comp, not complication, but we have the added step of having the trustees sign invoices and payroll. So yesterday, I spoke to the finance director. Well, let me back up. How it works is Megan would prepare whatever's needed in Munis, and then when things are ready for signature, I would be notified, and then I sign on to Munis, and I authorize the, the process to go forward to pay those. And so, so you need access to Munis for this. So today, yesterday, I'm sorry, the finance director called and asked me, raised the question, why the library trustees feel it's necessary that they sign every invoice or payroll? So I explained, this was never a trustee's decision. And just so you know, it started, when I started here 20 years ago, they used to require every boarding committee associated with the town department had to sign, like a quorum had to sign. So four trustees had to sign every bill, and that naturally delayed processing things. So several town accountants ago, he determined that that was not necessary, and he, he took that requirement away from the non-elected boards. So, you know, because they only had policy authority with different departments. So it stayed for the water trustees and the water commissioners and the library trustees. So, and he reduced the number to only one needed to sign. So that was some years ago. What I didn't know, and I only learned yesterday, was that the selectmen, who have responsibility for much greater part of the town operations, do not sign invoices and payroll. They may have at one time. Linda will know if that's true, but they haven't in some years. And so my, it appears that at some point, the, the selectmen decided they weren't going to do that anymore, and no one just ever informed the trustees or the water commissioners that that was not necessary. So this is my question. You get a monthly budget report. You can come in at any time and review invoices and payroll and timesheets. And you do get that monthly report. If you'd like a more in-depth report from Munis, we could give that to you as well. But I guess that's my question. If you want to have a more in-depth discussion, if you think this is an issue, we could put it on next month's agenda. Or if it's not being done by, you know, by the selectmen kind of tells me that perhaps it's not necessary. But I don't, you know, that would be your decision.
Linda?
Um, I don't think the selectmen have signed stuff like this in a Coons age that, because they are supposed to be dealing, not dealing with day-to-day. So they sign contracts, or they make a, they move to let the town administrator sign a contract. I understand that we're all, you know, trying to get away from signing things and everything electronic. I'm assuming this is a DocuSign type of thing, which has become very big in contracts and applications, this DocuSign nonsense. What do we think? Should we think about our own policies and say that any invoice over X dollars requires a trustee's signature? Or that's not contained in the budget? That is outside the budget or something? Sometimes those practices are just, it's the big stuff, and it's, and it's not so much a matter of trust, and this is not to insult Ginny, please. It is a question of process. So what do we want our process to be?
Can I just say one thing? Linda, we did, the board did vote a few years ago to give me the authority to sign contracts up to 25,000. So it was similar to the town administrators. There's very few of that. In fact, the CLIMs membership is the largest thing that we do, and the board approved that new membership agreement some years ago, maybe two years ago. So anyway, so we do have that. I mean, I, I don't, just wanted to let you know that.
Bernadette?
Yeah, I think same point. My understanding has always been our job is we are, like the selectmen, we deal with policies. We don't get involved in day-to-day. And same as what Ginny just said, for anything, you know, really large and really large for us is not that large. It, it's day-to-day. I, I feel no need to continue signing any invoices or have any, any other change, just simply stop signing. The DocuSign thing, right now, it's, it's a, you know, sort of a blessing because of COVID. And it has become a trend. There's nothing to say, you know, you can't still back it up with paper and pen signatures, which a lot of, you know, industries and places that use it do. So I don't think it's the DocuSign thing so much. It's the whole, the overall thing of, we don't need to be signing off on invoices. And I would prefer to stop doing it.
Well, we've also established our authority for hiring. And, and, and this won't, this shouldn't affect that at all. Maybe you want us to sign for hiring people or when you're appointing new people?
I think that's helpful. I think there are times, and it could be separate, that you sign personnel actions and not, not the invoices and payroll. And I think that's helpful, too. Sometimes there are personnel actions that that could be different. You know, I think you do have authority there, and that you should be aware of what we're doing.
That seems appropriate. Linda?
I'm going to suggest that we, as a board, send Ginny off and with a very, making a short memo that says, "These are the things the trustees will sign. These are the things the library director will sign. This is the stuff that's out of the ordinary, that might be every day, but it's out of the ordinary, requires a trustee's signature." Put something together so it's all in one spot, because being a new person on this board, I didn't know about the $25,000 one, which makes perfect sense. So maybe we do that and then come back in another meeting and think about what we want to have as a process, all in one spot.
So let's, we'll put that on the agenda for next month. Okay, all right. Then just, are you raising your...
I'm trying to, but I can't figure out where I can get it on the screen. Okay.
There you go.
Um, I'm not sure I'm understanding this. I mean, I, I sign bills every week. I never call Jeannie Wheeler and say, "Do you know we had a bill for $300 to such and such?" I mean, I don't discuss what I've signed. I've retained one millionth of the information after I sign it. So when I hear you say you don't have to sign, or we're going to sign for things that are out of the ordinary, I'm not sure I get, I can understand having to sign for them, and that would be fine, and you could call me, and I could come in. But if I signed something, the rest of yous don't know what I've signed. So I'm not sure why, why we're going into that. Well, we're going to get into another bucket of stuff we need to know now that we didn't have before.
But we, that's right, because you do sign personnel actions.
You already do sign that, Joan. Personnel actions you sign, yep. And there may be, and I feel there's a value in this.
None, none of these, what are we again? Trustees know that I signed an action for Emily or for, you know, I mean, it's not just something that I've ever been told to share or thought I should share. I don't, it makes no difference to me. Whatever way you want to go is fine. It's not a big enough deal that I'm saying, "Oh, my God, you can't do that." I just don't, I guess I don't want to, when they find something to save time, I don't want to give Ginny another job to take more of her time so that we have our time saved.
But as I understand what we're talking about, it wouldn't affect Ginny whatsoever. It wouldn't put anything more on her whatsoever.
And learn more about Munis, but that's going to have to happen anyway. Megan is more, I don't know if it's more of Megan's time, but it will, it also, she'll also be scanning invoices, so they'll be attached to whatever the form, whatever it's going to look like for the payment document or whatever. But the actual scanned invoice will be there, and it will reduce the amount of paper records that need to be kept and, and also make it easier to find them electronically, which, so it's all really good, yeah. Megan's already started doing something of that.
But sometimes there are an incredible number of pieces of paper that go over there. So it'd be nice not to have to save those yourself. Okay, got it.
Linda?
And of course, we're all assuming that the wonderful, wonderful computer will never lose any documents so we can throw all the paper away. That's the accountant in me. I understand all of this electronic back and forth and DocuSigns and all this, because I have to deal with it in my practice. But you know, when something gets lost, that little piece of paper is all the proof you have. So hopefully, whatever they're doing electronically, they're doing backups and that it will actually be there, and they don't just throw the piece of paper away.
I'm sure they, they will be on the town hall end, Linda, but the thing is, right now, we keep a copy. We send a copy over to them, you know. There are copies in multiple places. So yeah, but there are public record laws where things have to be kept. So we will have to comply with that and keep it.
Okay. Now we'll, we'll talk this, we'll have something ready and have a short discussion next month. So moving on, in your packet were written, were reports from Ann Carpenter, the Youth Services Librarian, the Staff Librarian, Emily Carter, and the Assistant Technology Coordinator, Carla Burke. Does anyone have any questions that perhaps Ginny and Emily could? It all sounds really great, the way we're, way they're rising to the occasion.
Yes.
Mm-hmm. Okay, well, thank them for their reports.
Emily, did you want to add anything?
My apologies, first of all, for leaving Bernadette out of the minutes from last meeting, and also for not submitting a written report. I won't take a lot of time to give you a verbal report, but I will just catch you up kind of quickly on a few things that, that required a lot of my time and attention this month. Number one, transitioning back into having the building open for the public and working between two very different workflows, providing curbside service Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, and inside service Tuesday and Thursday, requires a lot more of my time on the desk. So I apologize for not getting a written report out to you in time. I also took an opportunity, now that we've been back, had the building back open to the public for about a month, to meet one-on-one with each of the senior library techs who are working on the front lines at the desk, just to check in with them and see how they thought things were going, what minor adjustments we might be able to make to the various procedures and workflows to be more efficient, and, you know, what concerns they had for the future, how things might change as we approach winter and other things. So those were very productive conversations, but they were also, you know, took up a lot of my time meeting with each of the seven staff members, one-on-one. Emily Carter joined me for those. It's just really helpful, because we tend to do a lot of the scheduling around the circulation desk and how things work. So it was just helpful to see what training staff members thought they might need and, and how we might better schedule things. So it's very helpful, very productive, but did take up quite a bit of time, so I didn't have as much time to put a written report together. But things are going very well, and the staff are all adjusting to new procedures, and patrons are delighted to be back in the building. So that's a really positive thing. And it's been nice to see some of you as well stopping by, so thank you.
Well, and you're trying to get adjusted in your new, new office, too.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not quite moved in. I don't get to spend a lot of time in here, to be honest, right now. I'm not getting to spend very much time in here. So I think today is the first day in probably three weeks that I've actually been here for, I guess it's been six hours straight now. So that's great.
Thanks. Okay, Building and Grounds Committee, next. Jeannie Wheeler?
Oh, I just have a couple of things. Last week, Joanne, Ginny, Emily, Mylan, and myself had a meeting with Beth Williams. And for those of you that may or may not know Beth, she is the interior decorator that we had used when we were installing the carpeting throughout the library, as well as all the work we did in the children's room with the new furniture, et cetera. We had Beth come in to show her around the library, first of all, with all the retrofitting that had been done, show her Ginny's new office and Emily's office. But also Emily worked with her to try to get some ideas on what to do with the area behind this, I'm losing my voice, sorry, the circulation desk, and, and ways that perhaps she can come up with ideas for building some shelving or storage so that the staff has a place to put their coats, their bindings, when they come to work, to make the area more organized and efficient and safe for everyone. The other thing is that we noticed that the gutter off the roof in the back facing the parking lot had come off. And Ginny notified Sean on that, and I believe it was put up, a new gutter was put up today. Am I correct, Emily, Ginny?
Awesome.
It was a 60-foot length, wasn't it?
That was huge.
Bernadette, you might remember Beth Williams from, from the library renovation, because she worked on that, too.
Yeah, and the kids, I wasn't directly involved with the National, at that time, but the National Art Honor Society kids at Wanamoy worked with them to create the artwork to go with it, the children's.
But what I'm talking about was when the, when the renovation was done in 98.
Yeah.
She was the one that chose the carpeting and the colors on the walls and everything. So she's very familiar with the library.
Yep.
Okay, Stephen Ford is not here.
Joanne?
Yes.
Did you or Jeannie want to talk about the meeting with Griffin Rider and the sidewalk project?
Oh.
I can, if you want.
I met with, I met with Jenny and Griffin Rider and, because I'm part of Building and Grounds, too. And he looked at the plans that McGinnley Council had put together and said that that we really needed a more specific plan than that before the sidewalk was was done and the trees replaced. So he was going to try to find someone that could come up with a plan.
He, he's in charge, he's a town engineer, he's in charge of procurement. So we had $90,000 approved a year ago in May at town meeting and for repairing the sidewalks, there are all these buckling and heaving caused by the trees, and to remove and replace the trees with the right kind of species. So we had a whole report from Landscape Architects was included in McGinnley Council's report on the whole exterior project. And and it included plans, but what Griffin said when he looked at it is that these are more conceptual plans and and he talked about it from more an engineering point of view where he wants to get someone to develop those further more into specifications. And you can really see just from the way he talked about it, because this project went through and was vetted by every committee, was provided the plans and all. But now that we have an engineer in charge of procurement, this is, you can see the improvement that will be in the end result, because you know, whatever you put out to bid is what you're going to get, and he's going to look at options. He talked about there may be some changes. Right now, the plan called for to replace the brick with an asphalt layer underneath, which is the way it is now, but he says the practice is changing to have a cement layer underneath, because the asphalt still provides a soft surface and allows buckling. So it's that kind of thing that he wants to look at and get more detailed plans. So he'll be going out to he'll be contracting for that and then possibly by spring we'll have a report. It's likely it would need additional funds. But this would be part of asking, you know, is getting the more accurate, more detailed specifications, so we know the cost and also to look at options.
Well, I was very encouraged by talking to him.
Oh, me too. He really knows, he knows what he's doing and and it was nice to have that assistance. This will be his pro, like, he would take the lead on this. This wouldn't be the library project, because now that it's it's either a facilities or a sidewalk issue, it's not a library operations kind of thing. And so that was nice to know that we would be, you know, we might be assisting in in advocating for a project, but the technical part of the work of procurement or determining what needs to be done will not be our responsibility.
And it's amazing, it's amazing, the brickwork has not improved over the last five years. It's, it's still not safe. Okay, do we, do we have any correspondence? Okay, let's, we'll move on to old business. I think you've given us the update on the library operations during COVID.
I did. As Emily said, it's been going really well. We expanded to Saturdays a couple of weeks ago. And we're looking to open full days beginning the week of November 16th. So for people watching, that will, our hours will be Tuesday and Thursday, 10 to 7, and Saturday, 10 to 4 p.m. And those are our normal pre-COVID hours. I think that, you know, what we see a lot is, it's hard right now. When we were opening Saturdays, we had to discuss what hours to pick. We picked 10 to 2, just so it would be consistent with Tuesday, but it's really hard for people to remember whether we're open 10 to 2 on Tuesday or 3 to 7. So the full day will be nice. And we think that we'll see some increase in use, but not, but also it will spread people out more, which is also good.
Okay, I have here follow-up on the Rockland Trust report. What we were talking about earlier in the meeting was the report on the trust funds separately and what was coming in and out of them. Oh, so, so we really don't need to discuss this anymore.
This was just in case, you know, some of, the report from Rockland Trust or the updated or fuller report was distributed after the meeting.
Yes.
And so in case anyone had any questions about whether that was satisfactory or not, that's why it's on the agenda.
And, but we, we still want yearly reports, we want monthly reports, and we want them to come back once a year to give that report to us. Bill? So, so that, that is what we'd like to to tell Rockland Trust. We want, Linda, you said quarterly would be enough? We don't need monthly reports from Rockland Trust?
I think the quarterly was with the report on the state aid and articles.
Yeah, okay. So now I'm talking about the Rockland Trust report. Linda had requested that they give us the annual reports from the last bunch of years, from the last five years. And after reviewing those statements, she requested that we receive monthly statements from Rockland Trust and that we meet with them once a year.
We have been, we have, I have been receiving monthly statements, and I've been forwarding them to the treasurer and to Jenny. And now to Megan also.
Okay, do we need to include those in the packets?
I think in the earlier discussion, you said just to email them to you when we receive them, which we'll do. But I guess this is on the agenda to ask, did that more comprehensive report from Rockland Trust, did that answer people's questions? Or did they want to have them back sooner? And it sounds like they answered everyone's questions or provided the info that we're looking for.
So is everyone okay with what we've decided?
I would not recommend shooting out all this financial information about our escrow funds to too many places and people and just kind of keep it the way we have had it. Because in the past, we've been guarded about our escrow, not escrow, sorry, endowment funds. And we like to know what we have, but we don't necessarily want other town boards to know what we have.
Okay, do you, Linda, would you like a copy of that also? Each month?
I'm fine to get it. I just like looking at this stuff and seeing how things are moving along.
Okay. Well, Bill, could you send that to Linda then?
I can do that or just ask Megan to push it along to Linda.
Okay.
Megan can do that, yep. She gets it directly, Bill, also.
Because I don't know that everybody else wants to see that in detail.
That's, that's what I'm saying. And I believe Rockland is now sending it directly to not only me, but to Megan and to the, to the town treasurer.
Okay.
Great.
We could have Megan send it to Linda.
Let's see how that works for a while.
Yes, I, I understand. I think it's, we don't want it all over, because then we have everybody saying, well, wait a minute, they've got all this money, they don't need it for the yearly appropriations. Okay, moving on.
And now that Linda's one of us, we can trust her not to
Tell secrets.
Be the liaison to the selectmen anymore.
Well.
I did not bring your secrets to the selectmen when I was there.
No, but you stood up for us the most.
We want to keep it that way.
Actually, not all that secret. It's right in the town report every year. The treasures pile in there.
Well, we'd like to set this up yearly and probably in August, because August would be before we were, August would be after their year-end wrap-up and it'd be before we have to start talking about budgets.
My only comment about August is people are away and their minds are away. They're not necessarily on this type of business as much.
We could make it.
I would think September makes more sense.
Okay. But we should try to get it on a yearly basis.
Absolutely.
Okay, and that's still plenty of time before budget time. Okay?
All right.
Okay, new bus, moving on to new business. Do we have any monetary donations?
Sorry, yes, we do. We have a donation of $100 from a Mr. Duff Campbell as a thank you to the library. I guess he's been living in Howard for the past few months and enjoying using Wi-Fi and all the library services, you know, checking things out.
Well, isn't that nice?
Very nice.
Okay, can I have a motion to accept the donation of $100?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the $100 donation.
Okay, thank you, Joan. Second, second. All right, we'll have a roll call vote. Linda Sibula?
Accept.
Bill is, has disappeared. Joan made the motion.
Accept.
Okay, Kathleen?
Accept.
Okay, Bernadette?
Accept.
Next page, Jeannie Wheeler.
Accept.
Okay, and I, Joanne Brown, vote to accept that. Next item, preparation of the FY '22 budget. Do you have anything you want to discuss about that, Jenny?
I do. The town administrator held several department head meetings in the past week. One last week and one yesterday, and he's given us a copy of the fiscal '22 budget message from the Board of Selectmen, which I'll forward to you. The budget message directs the town administrator to present a budget that has at most a 2% increase from fiscal '21. However, it states the starting point is a level-funded budget. So a level-funded budget is not a level services budget. Some fixed costs go up every year, so a level-funded budget requires reduction in other areas. So we will be looking at some reductions in either expenses or salary lines or a combination of expenses and salaries. I don't have any more specific guidance yet from the town on this. The town administrator is preparing budget instructions and he's going to send them out probably in the next week or two. So then also on the capital plan. Last month, you voted to push back on the capital plan project for the interior configuration of the library for several years. So normally, by this time of year, we would have had to submit any updates to existing projects or asked to add any new projects. And usually in October, we would have already met with a capital outlay committee. So at a meeting yesterday, I asked the town administrator about this, and he said they do not plan to solicit for any new projects and but that rather than me submitting any changes by letter now, I should wait for his instructions on the budget, because they'll be comprehensive covering the operating budget and the capital plan. So, so no info yet, but hopefully soon. It is, you know, obviously going to be a tight fiscal year.
Okay. Then the next thing on the agenda is trustees' report and request for next meeting's agenda. I'd like to poll the trustees to see if you have any reports or comments or feedback from yourself or community members about anything we haven't discussed. Are there any issues you'd like to add to the agenda or receive a report on at our next meeting? Bernadette?
No, nothing here.
Okay, Bill's occupied. Jeannie Wheeler?
No, nothing here.
Nothing here. Joan McCarty?
No.
Okay. Kathleen?
No.
Okay, and Linda Sibula?
No, but a comment, but if I could just make a comment that whoever put together this nice little report on the summary of state aid is very clear and concise, so I don't know who, who did that. But it was very nicely done.
Megan Green, she's our executive assistant.
Megan did. That's what I like, one page.
Bill, is there is there anything that you'd like to talk about or add to the agenda for next month?
No.
Nope, nothing to add? Okay, upcoming meetings. Jenny, do we have a, have we gotten the time for our meeting with the Board of Selectmen?
Yep, I just emailed that this afternoon. It came in late this afternoon, Joanne. December 21st for the trustees. I, I imagine this will be very different than other years when the whole board would attend. I'm sure you're welcome to attend. I also kind of wonder if November, I mean, December 21st is the week of Christmas and whether there will be a meeting that week, but that's when we're scheduled.
Okay. More on that next month. Okay, our next, our next board meeting is December 2nd at 7 o'clock, and the one after, one in January is January 6th. Okay? May I have a motion to adjourn?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Joan wants to. Okay, anyone, a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I'll do a
I thought I was getting hung out there.
Well, everybody wants to say. Linda, how do you, Linda Sibula, how do you vote? Do you vote to adjourn?
Yes.
Bill?
As much fun as I'm having, and I don't want to go to this other meeting that's in the table and 20 feet away from me, I'll vote to adjourn.
That sounds awful. Joan?
I, I made the motion and I'm ready to go.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Bernadette?
Motion to adjourn.
And Jeannie already has, and I, I vote to adjourn also. Meeting is adjourned at 7:50. So you can